Mr. Chairman.
I'm now going to call Wednesday, September 6th, 2023 meeting of Norfolk County Commissioners in succession. Going to read the Executive Order of Remote Participation. On Wednesday, March 29th, Governor Hill signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act making appropriation for fiscal year 2023, which includes a two-year extension, the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, as General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That action was effective until the current option of remote meetings through March 31st, 2025. And I ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the fire. Let's leave justice to the flag for the United States of America.
I will let you chance one nation, I think God is visible. I believe justice.
Thank you. We're going to call roll Commissioner State.
Your President, sir.
Please call on President. Commissioner Shea is present at the Forum. Welcome to all today. We are having our weekly meeting at our Norfolk County Agricultural High School in Walpole. So hopefully we've drawn some new listeners as a result of this. This meeting is a regularly scheduled meeting. After this meeting, we're meeting with all of our fellow county commissioners from all the counties to discuss certain issues affecting law.
Do you want me to read them?
Number three.
Sorry, do you want me to read that?
Yes.
I like it. Are they giving the motion for this? Screen, then GLC, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 3. To discuss strategy with respect to funding, litigation. An open meeting may have a danger of bargaining or litigating with the public body and the chair of the affairs.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second, if we want to executive session. I'll call roll Commissioner State.
Yes, sir.
Please call. Commissioner Shea votes yes.
We return.
We're going to win the executive session. We will be returning for the remainder of our agenda. So did Claire. And I saw the player that we.
I see.
Which we have. We got those.
Start again. Sorry. You were muted. Can you start that last item again?
Where do we need to pick up though?
Where you started.
We did four. So we had to do four.
Four again, yeah.
Four again. Okay, we're back in check at Wednesday, September 6th, 2023. Our regular meeting, Act Number Four, Minutes of the Open Session Minutes of August 30th.
I will move approval of the minutes of August 30th.
Second. Motion made second, all favor. It is a vote. Number, number five appointments, we have none. Number six, public comment. Is there anyone out in Zoom land that has any public comment on today's meeting? Any information, any public comment, please? Correct, no, this is not there. Last call for public comment. That completes our number six. Number seven, whole business. I have none. Number K, personnel matters for consideration. We have three in three different departments.
Mr. Chairman, if you will.
Commissioner State.
Yes, sir. First one, at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, I move approval of the contingent employment of Matthew Otter of Walpole, Mass. As a substitute teacher, the rate stated effective 9/11/23. So moved.
Motion made second, all favor.
Ah, it is a vote. In the legislature's office, the chairman. I move notice to accept the notice of resignation of Gavin Follin of Quincy, Mass. At the rate stated, his resignation effective 3/10/23. So moved.
Second. Motion made second, all favor. Aye, it is a vote. Third one.
And lastly, Chairman Registry of Deeds, I move notice of appointment of Jordan Freeman, IPAC, as senior clerk at the rate stated, effective 9/18/23. So moved.
Second. Motion made second, it's all favor. Aye, it is a vote. That completes personnel. Number nine, payroll expense warrants.
I am, we didn't have the personnel papers signed, so I will authorize the county to use my stamp in stamping those papers because it's the paper for you today. It was part of the meeting. So I don't know, would you authorize?
Yeah, I would like.
And the chairman will.
The record show that the authority can decide the following warrant list of 9/23. Fair enough?
Yes.
All right.
Number nine, payroll expense warrants.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman. Or on list 9/23, where aside, 24-9 payroll to county through approval of $159,132.70, so moved.
Second. Motion made second, all favor. Aye, it is a vote.
Second, 24-9, 65, through approval of the payroll to school, amount of $395,424.69, so moved.
Second. Made second, all favor. Aye, it is a vote.
Third, we have, there's no expense for the county. Correct. Okay, sir. Next is the expense for the school, 24-03, through approval of $129,921.50, so moved.
Second. Motion made second, all favor. Aye, it is a vote.
Last one, of Walts Recreation Facility, through approval of 9-5/23, credit card payment was made, sum of $42,348, so moved.
Second. Motion made second, all favor. Aye.
That concludes the warrant list of this meeting.
I must be looking at a different list, but I had those four. But I did have county expense.
I did not have. I'd be so glad to have it in my list.
Yeah.
It wasn't on my sheet.
Okay.
All right, that's why I asked. All right, Mr. Chairman. I'll exit at that. Then I move approval of the expense for the county. This is for 09-0124. And move the approval amount of $151,395.35, so moved.
Second. Motion made second, all favor. Aye, it is a vote. Thank you. Those payroll expense warrants. Number 10. Report on American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 directive.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. A very brief update. First, we have no ARPA awards this week. I expect one, at least one next week. Did you want to update? We held a Zoom call with officials from Brookline relative to their ARPA program. With the town manager, this is the town manager and a variety of other fiscal folks. Learned a lot. Brookline, in addition to having an $11 million plus award from the county, has a $32 million ARPA award directly from the federal government. The, I guess the stated reason why we haven't seen so much activity with these people, they've been very busy. They use a community-based approach to generating requests for ARPA. And they have afforded $32 million to approximately 75 entities locally from their watch. Regarding the county's money, as you know, they put in a $5 million billion pay request. We haven't heard much from them because they have been busy pulling together all the payroll records associated with that request. We expect to be able to buy within the next week or so on that item. With $6 million to go, they have informed us that they have approximately 20 other ARPA applications that are approved by the select board in requirement. We personally bundle them into as few applications as possible. They intend to do so working with our monitors, which you get in. Overall, it's an excellent call. I wanted to thank Bill Galvin for pulling the call together. These stakeholders understand our enthusiasm to help them. And I was very impressed by their activities to date, giving $32 million globally. So a good call, and I will inform the advisory board, Chairwoman Dark Child is the same on a state tour the next few days about that call. That's all I have relative to the ARPA page.
Number 11. Supervise, we have no warrants. Yes. We have no ARPA warrants. Number 12, paid openings at 10:30. We have no bids today. Number 13. Contracts awarded today. Takes us to number 14, annual trial court audit for approval. Continue packing. Yes.
Commissioners, have any questions about this? The line is on, so we can explain. But this is a audit that proves the work involved in our office and the trial courts on our annual police payments. Were audited, renewed, and it's all favorably on county official consequence court.
Oh, I see. Well, thank you most.
Mr. Chairman, I mean.
George.
Commissioner State. Essentially, the trial court has found evidence dissatisfaction.
That's correct.
It shows a bit of a force.
No, okay, that's correct. Okay, as long as it's objective.
Yeah, motion made me, I'll say.
Motion made second, all favor.
Aye.
The full detail of the dollar is presented. Number 15, fiscal year first supplemental budget and budget transfer for approval, directed problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. This afternoon, I wish to reveal to the county that we are sitting on a surplus of FY23 of $2,586,138.06. Mr. Buck will be pulling up a PowerPoint presentation which will detail for you and for next week's advisory board recommendations there. And. If you have anything you want to know. There you go. Thank you. This agenda will cover a few different items, including an overview of the FY24 supplemental needs and observations, as well as an overall statement that, by intention with this surplus in FY24 against too slow spending, the county has a decent surplus to begin fiscal year 2024. But with the uncertain revenue projections relative to some of the areas that we both are budget on, and it's proven at this time, try and slow down any additional supplemental needs for fiscal year 24. I'll give you a brief, the ARPA update within primarily for the advisory board. Commissioners, it replicates this presentation that you saw last week. So I'll skip that, but you will see it next week. It's the advisory board. At the end, there are a series of proposed motions. Screen three shows the available surplus, as I mentioned, to $5 billion. Must be $575,000, as we did authorize that to capital for FY24. We have supplemental budget spending herein of approximately $337,400. And our FY24 budget set aside, which was required by state law, was $712,611.07. So after the proposals in this plan are put over today and will be voted upon, county will sit on approximately $961,126 surplus for the revenue deal, which I would spoil. To begin, overall, the stabilization account is currently fit. Funded at $6,841,181 for 16.8% of our budget. That is just below the maximum level of the apron to prevent it at 20%. Very healthy stabilization. OPEC received a consulting, Gatsby report from Stone Consulting back in January. Our liability is in $40,129,000. Each year, we put $100,000 towards that liability with regular recurring payments and satisfy our loan rating agencies. So as you can see, our projected liability is just below $40 million. Supplemental needs, there are a few, not many, but a few. Our technology department requires $14,100 for Adele, R450 server and rack station for engineering, as well as software Tyler, the bottom recording for information technology. We are proposing $50,000 to fund temporary salaries for the Brown Tech optimization team, which will include individuals from the registry of deeds. Regarding the registry of deeds, we received a request to transfer supplement $50,000 for temporary salaries. I'm recommending that we fund $15,000 for those two individuals, as requested by the reg. Please note that the reg had pointed out this led to the commissioners that there was some value in the temporary salaries in FY24 as these individuals had quite a lot of institutions to acknowledge. But it was important to reflect that in the amount of $15,000 that's going in temp salaries to technology where they can be managed by the scale of the same purpose. We are going to recommend a, an amendment to the registry of deeds appropriation. Their actual spending versus projected spending results in approximately $18,105.75, which would be reduced from their FY24 appropriation. So in short, the FY24 appropriation remain was $3,305,713.22. Their actual spending was $3,207,423.92. When you include their 2.5% increase pursuant to 64D, the new number is $3,287,607.47, as I mentioned, for $18,105.75 reduction. The motion, the fact that it reflected that company comes from a certain account, which we'll tell you just a minute. In a moment, we will ask you to vote on transfers. The North Hook County High School has several transfers to move money around for two positions, which are being trustees reformed about, as well as some capital optimization on that zero. The advisory board, we're recommending $50,000 in FY24 to fund against, to defend against a lawsuit brought by the registry of deeds. The particular account expended $11,761. Maintenance. Breatham District Court needs quite a lot of exterior painting and carpentry work with some rot. They have received some estimates of work that committed around $50,000. We also received news that the Dedham District Court Elevator is in the revenue repair. In received two estimates from two different firms that seem to indicate a new elevator components they're in is required. This estimate kind of falls in between each of those estimates will be put out to bid once this optimization is passed. We are budgeting $2,500 for FY23 unpaid bills. And as in FY23, we're going to request a 10% commission contingency on commissioners related capital items. In this case, that will total $25,800. In total, the supplemental needs in this particular round is $337,400. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm going to keep going. So observations. County will leverage available $3 million in ARPA funds in FY24 to fund projects at Walts Recreation Facility at $250,000. Commission's office at $369,000, treasurer's office at $80,000. Facilitating ports at $1 million, schools at $369,000. Those are elements that I explained last week, the ARPA plan. We are requesting a $2 million transfer from the Capital Improvement Fund to install a new HVAC system in Dedham Superior Court. As I mentioned last week, commissioners, this project may have cost offset with ARPA if excess capacity in our $3 million budget develops. And by the way, this particular cost, whatever it ends up becoming, is eligible for 100% reimbursement for the state. I have alerted the record facilities of the trial boards of this intended expense, which is quite high. The county has completed its FY21 audit, and it will now continue audit services for FY22, 23. We've been putting out a bid for those services the next month. County's exploring electric vehicle charging station brand through state utility providers in each court, school, and the revenue to Walts Recreation Facility. The Dedham registry location, which was listed, we can mention that last week. Again, these are notes that are primarily to the advisory board next week. Despite our healthy FY24 surplus, the county plans to slow spending in the first half of fiscal year, protect the little surfaces. We'll evaluate more aggressive spending in December. Going to ask the committee to skip slides eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13, 14, 15, and 16. As we arrive at the back end of those motions, I think I'll stop at this point, see if there are any questions about the proposed supplemental plan before we can implement any of the motion. Chairman, thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
Ben, when I mentioned, you're on set. I don't know which, I do know which one, the school generally. At some point, probably in grace, we're on capital for our school. We're trying to kind of make a great of the charts for later. I'm always amazed by his work, how quickly he gets the answer. And I find him. Easy to read and we're happy to pass this one. Don't. The advisory board, as far as the answer, implications of this. That word of praise because. If I can understand it, it's a good job. Any other questions, any motions?
We want the motions that were proposed on page 14.
Correct, because we're going to forward all of this.
Yeah.
For next week's advisory board.
He's right, as we've talked about before. I think the most surprise was here. They all make sense. Happy to move them. I'll start if you want, Chairman.
Motion number one, it's on slide 16.
All right, I want to move, except the proposed ARPA plan, inclusive of two consideration of slide 16.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Motion one, motion revise fiscal 24 registry of deeds appropriation. This one, the master in law chapter 64D, section 0, from $3,305,713.22 to $3,287,607.27, reduction of $18,105.75 based on the actual fiscal 23. Registry of deeds expenditure of $3,207,421.82. With separate buys amount funded by a minimum of $1,000 Monday in $820,000, 40% on fiscal 24. Registry of deeds obligation and direct cost for fiscal 24 deeds excise. Different actions shall be accounted number 001.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Hello?
Keep going. I'm going to finish this motion, then we'll get to you.
Okay.
From 001 dot 340, 5275 dot 00 dot 00 dot 00. Office machinery and licensing deals. That is motion number one.
Second. On motion number one, made and seconded, all favor.
Mr. Chairman.
Now it's the start. Okay, yes. We have some input and discussion on this first motion?
Somebody was calling.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Chairman? This is Bill O'Donnell. How are you?
Good morning, Reg.
Listen, again, my purpose was to video in, and then things went down. I know Dallas has just got it up, was working hard on it. I went on the phone, and I was trying to, before you made the motion, just try to, you know, have some comment. And it wasn't being recognized, and you couldn't get in. So I appreciate that you're leaving, but obviously, when you go to the Aggie school, there's some technical difficulties because I think this is the second time. Again, briefly, I appreciate that there's a motion for $15,000 on the temporary salaries. But, and I'd ask if you could incorporate my letter and attach it to the minutes of August 16th, 2023. We requested $50,000. And the letter in part says that, you know, the registry of deeds engages highly skilled temporary employees, including Rich Sarani, Rich Kennedy, Gary Lubin. And, you know, they certainly have a lot of institutional knowledge about the county, about the registry, about land court. And again, the request was $50,000. They certainly help with management. They certainly help with trying to cover things here when other managers have to use up vacation time. More importantly, there was mentioned that there's supposed to be some type of study. A couple of these people would be great resources. Rich Kennedy, former first assistant, and Gary Lubin, former land court supervisor. They were certainly, when we modernized the registry and have utilized Brown Tech over the years, as well as the customization. The reason I'd ask you to consider the $50,000 request, and again, I'd ask that the letter be part of the record, is, you know, I'd heard you mention attorney's fees, Attorney Scott Lopez's opinion regarding Chapter 64D, Section 12. In his June 16th, 2020 opinion, he says indeed, the use of the word shall by the legislature means these amounts must be spent each year. And furthermore, you know, at the Norfolk Superior Courthouse Attorney Lopez, who represents you, stated that the registry of deeds must spend all of the registry statutory share of collected deeds excise. Why do I bring that up? Not to bring up the lawsuit. I wish it wasn't going on. I bring it up because in July, we sent over $200,716,000. That's just the registry share of deeds excise. So to me, just that one month, and we finished up August, and we'll be sending over August, just that one month, you have more than, more than enough to cover the $50,000 request. And again, I know at some of the meetings, and again, I prefer being at the meetings. Maybe not everyone prefers that, but, you know, we handed out some information, some charts. And in fiscal 23, the registry share, again, the registry share pursuant to Chapter 64D, Section 12A, which says the registry gets 40%, no less than 40, and the county gets no more than 60. That total share that went over in fiscal 23 was $1,736,297.81. So there's significant, and again, I appreciate the motion that it was $15,000, but the request was $50,000. Other county departments have gotten to utilize temporary monies to pay for employees. I know the treasurer's office got to, you know, utilize temporary monies to pay for temporary work. And I just ask you to consider that. I appreciate, and I, again, I recognize you all have different positions. I wish technologically, we could have this discussion, you know, in a, before any vote, but I'd ask you to reconsider what you're about to do. I think it's, the registry has the money, and it's needed. And the original request was $50,000 on the April 16th, 2023 letter. Thank you on that issue.
Thank you. We're back on motion number one. That is proposed, read into record by Commissioner State. Any comments, discussion? He made the motion, I made the second. Okay, motion made second, motion all favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion number two, Commissioner State.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move motion two for approval pursuant to Master in Law, Chapter 35, Section 28D. Motion to approve the withdrawal and appropriation of $2 million for capital improvement fund to fund the Dedham Superior Court heating, ventilation, and air conditioning project, first study received of Habib Associates Office 11 this year, requires a two-third rule. So moved.
Second. Motion number two, made and seconded, all favor.
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thank you. Number three, Commissioner State.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Motion three, motion to fund a total of.
Motion three, motion to fund a total of two million five hundred four thousand four hundred dollars inclusive of supplemental capital and transfer needs as provided we attach fiscal twenty-four second budget adjustment. So, second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, three motions. If you have any further questions, Director Cronin relative to this budget adjustment dated September thirteenth, moving twenty-three. Thank you. Number sixteen. Prem determination form from D O E for design eligibility and farm plans for agricultural solar generation tariff unit under the smart plan. Oh, I am. Phil Buckley.
If you just give me a moment, I apologize. Okay, I don't need that. Mr. Chair, pursuant to the votes taken by this board previously in support of, not now, in support of our ongoing solar project, we have the latest iteration of that, which is a document that needs to be signed, authorized by the commission to be signed by the chair for work with the University of Massachusetts at, and Stockbridge's photovoltaic solar program. So we just have the document here, I apologize, pulling it up for you. So here's the, here's the cover document. So again, this is allowing them to proceed with work. We talked a great deal in the sites for phase three about that large hay field and making sure that the solar panels that we would be constructing up there would also have an ability for cultivation underneath it. This is, I think, the first of its kind in the Commonwealth's partnership with the UMass and her clean energy extension out there. So this allows Kierzaj to move forward as we continue through the permitting process to to continue their work with UMass Amherst. And we have, the document in question is a document from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And this is the predetermination form, just so that they can look at our proposal and see if we're eligible for that program. We, we are highly confident we are. I know Scott took a look at this as well. It's, it's mostly to do with the, the design portions and the eligibility thereof. So the bottom of the form will be signed by the chair and by Superintendent Martin and Director Cronin. And happy to answer any questions, but this is sort of a perfunctory. It has a lot of the information we've talked, talked about already, a lot of site plan information that you all have seen many, many times over. That, I think, we're, even though I'm a Bridgewater State guy, very excited to be working with the UMass system and continuing partnerships with public education from secondary school here to the collegiate program.
So are we looking for a motion?
Just to empower Chairman Shea to sign on behalf of the commission.
And also Director Cronin to sign?
That's correct, as the landowners.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second your question in the second.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I make?
Yes.
So essentially, since we want to make sure we're clear on this, this is a form that is generated by UMass.
Uh, in conjunction with the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
So, and that's to make sure that what we're going to enter into, Kierzaj or whatever with them, complies with
Their specifications, yes.
For the novel, it's a novel approach, right?
It's awesome.
Agricultural program for the solar panels.
Right.
Those are heights and things like that. Okay. This is just a determination for us.
Yeah, they have.
And then tell, tell us if we're complying or not.
That's correct. And we'll go back to you, yeah, so that, we're, we're certifying that we've met their design criteria. It's obviously, we're not producing that, Kierzaj is, to say, you know, the state has come out with these criteria. We've risen to the occasion and met them, and then they're going to review that and go on from there.
Well, I couldn't see it. Does Kierzaj just sign one of those bill?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that's correct. Yeah, that's okay. I understand it, yeah, pretty pro forma.
It's gonna be awesome, I think.
Yeah, no, I know, it's just a, it's just the form they need to make sure they're okay according to this then, right?
Right, and it allows, you know, it allows them to access the smart plan, just as they have.
Which is, oh, that's good.
Okay. You have a response, Bill?
Uh, not with me, we'll, we'll get it to you by next week.
Listen in my back, I will see. Okay, so the vote is, an approval vote to sign, allow the chairman to sign this form.
And the director.
That's the director. And the director.
Yeah.
I'll take, motion made in second to approve allowing the chairman and the county director to sign this newer form, the, the design eligibility and farm plan for the agricultural solar generation tariff. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you. Seventeen, report to the county director.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I have two items for you, very briefly, I wanted to report that last week. I explained to you an opportunity to possibly expand the opioid brand program that you've begun with the district attorney with Forrest's office. I contacted his office and extended the opportunity to perhaps add in additional settlement funds that were coming to us for the next several years. The district attorney responded, I know it was on Friday, enthusiastically, very interested, engaged with us over an extended period of time and while these funds through the commissioners vote in upcoming meetings to go to various coalition groups in Norfolk County that are batting disease program. And also, the second item, last item, it is what we correctly accepted, the resignation of our fiscal specialist commissioners office. It's what the commissioners office know, who will quickly to post the position and backfill it without too much of a delay. This position was created last year, the incumbent performed quite well, we're very happy. We do see, unfortunately, the need at this point to backfill her, so without delay. That's why I, that is why I think.
Anything else for the county director?
There goes no action. It probably won't get paid, no? Do you get paid this week?
I have a closed business here, under number eighteen, I have a form that I believe is in your packet. We fill it, I ain't tasking. Supplies with this, this is a form from the trial court of Massachusetts, office of court manager. Says pursuant to general law chapter twenty-nine.
We already did that one. Fourteen.
I am sorry.
Right at the end.
I'm sorry, please don't. I remember what Daniel's in your packet.
Scott's given it?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jerome Scott.
Yesterday, we received an email from Andy Bruce of Kierzaj, indicating that they met with the planning board the last week. The chair of the planning board asked questions about the decommissioning process. The planning board chair wanted to be included, wanted to make sure the town of Walpole was moving on the decommissioning bond or the credit that Kierzaj is responsible to provide the time, after the time of construction. And also wanted to allow and ask that the county provide the town access to county land. If Kierzaj or, and/or the county and/or the Aggie School does not access the funds to decommission the project, the end of the project. So this, we couldn't reasonably anticipate this in the business. Two, I would ask that the commissioners authorize me to try and access these pieces as it is conditional in the event county and Kierzaj do not access funds to decommission project. So the town. Possible this. So we could continue on the state of project. Correct? Correct, yeah, and with this impact better. So the project. The vision, the commissioning, the chairman. And the if at that time, the town of Walpole is concerned about it, at that time, the Kierzaj no longer is a picture.
Scott, nobody can hear you enough speak up.
With the town of Walpole, my concern is that if Kierzaj is going to be moved upon the commission site. And return, return the land to the state prior to the project. And the county doesn't take steps to do it, and Aggie School doesn't take steps to do it. Town of Walpole wants to be able to get access to both the funds and the property to be able to do so. I saw it for the town of Walpole.
I, I think I'm motion.
So this is basically to grant an access fee to the town of Walpole.
Contention.
Contention on, obviously, number one approval, number two.
It would, it would be a conditional accessing, you know, the conditions mean that either Kierzaj nor the county nor the Aggie School has decommissioned the site.
Got it, so in the bit, the commission that hadn't taken place, they would be granted the easement for the purpose of gaining access to our community. That, that's, if it's held that way, that's fine, that's fine with that.
That's my motion.
Any other further discussion?
Makes sense.
Motion made in second, all favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Last call, under number eighteen, any other items you did not anticipate out yet?
Mr. Chairman, we adjourn at eleven thirty-five, to note that we have meetings with other counties. We'll be adjourned.
Good afternoon, Chairman, motion made in second, all favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.